Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of May 28, 2013. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always supply for our meetings. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Iberas.
Here.
And Harry Burrows, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few announcements this evening. First of all, the annual Posey Parade will take place Sunday, this Sunday, June 2nd, at 1:00 PM. This year's theme for the 73rd parade is "Salute to America." Ken, would you like to say something about that?
1 o'clock. And if you're there, there'll be good weather.
I'll be there.
Very good weather.
Yes, I'll bring the weather.
Okay.
Also, the city council has scheduled study sessions beginning at 6:00 PM on June 6th and 10:00 and 12:00 if necessary, 2013, to review the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 budgets. And also, in case you aren't aware, I see they're here tonight, Caltrain started running trains on the new elevated sections of our grade separation. And we will keep you posted as the remaining work progresses with hopefully a ribbon cutting somewhere toward the end of the year. We're looking forward to it. Presentations this evening. I'd like to receive a presentation report from Jamie Monazon, San Bruno Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, on the chamber's plans for the San Bruno Farmers Market.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ruane, City Council Members, City Manager Jackson, and Community Development Director, Mr. Roltring. Thank you for allowing this presentation of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce Farmers Market. The Chamber has always had a desire to enhance and build community goodwill. One way that we do this is by hosting the Farmers Market. As you know, for many years, the market was on San Mateo Avenue. The last year on the avenue showed a significant decrease in vendors and consumers to the market. In an attempt to rebuild the market, PCFMA, our then-partner, recommended, and the Chamber agreed, to move the market to the shops at Tamforan parking lot. The vision being that the move would increase revenues and exposure and bring in more shoppers. However, after one year at that location, it became clear that the location was not a viable one. Some of the many factors contributing to the lack of viability include the weather, the wind that came down Sneeve Lane would blow over the booths, and that created safety concerns. There was lack of signage and promotion from PCFMA. There were restrictions from Tamforan, such as we weren't allowed to serve coffee or any of those types of things. Anything that was available in the mall could not be available at the Farmers Market. And we discovered at the very last minute that PCFMA decided to pull out of San Bruno because they were losing money. We learned a great deal from this experience and wanted to learn more, so the Chamber started doing surveys of residents, city staff, merchants, and businesses throughout San Bruno. We wanted to know what we could do to give the market more appeal and encourage people to attend. Nearly 85% of us of the survey suggested moving back to San Mateo Avenue because they could walk to downtown, shop, eat, and enjoy the area. We've decided to give the people what they want and bring the market back to San Mateo Avenue. This market will be inviting, family-friendly, safe, and fun. In addition to being popular with consumers and profitable for farmers, it will be supportive of local businesses and the community organizations, and we will have activities for children and families every Sunday. We plan to use the Sunday markets as a venue to foster community connections, to encourage healthy food choices, and to support local businesses. Statistics show that those who attend the market stay and shop, 60% typically will stay and shop on the Avenue. This will help the Chamber satisfy one of our many goals of bringing more shoppers to the downtown. The market will be held on Sundays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, June 9th through November 24th. In order to achieve these goals, we have chosen to partner with a local Farmers Market Association, right here from San Mateo County. They are West Coast Farmers Market. I'd like to introduce Jerry Lammy, Jan Taylor, who I believe is stuck in traffic unfortunately. She was coming from Maraga. They are West Coast Farmers Market Association and were established in Redwood City in 2011, and they operate in Half Moon Bay, Mountain View, Brisbane, Redwood City, Foster City, Cupertino, and hopefully, very soon, in San Bruno. They have a mission statement if you'd like to hear it. Their mission statement is to establish, create, and operate a certified Farmers Market that will provide a viable economic marketplace for California farmers, food processors, and local artists, while providing local communities, tourists, and business interests access to high-quality and reasonably-priced California-grown, farm-fresh fruits and vegetables, baked goods, and processed foods, as well as serving as a showcase of California artisans. We hope to be the liaison between local farming, business, residential, and tourist communities, and strive to become the melting pot where all can come together in commerce and to participate in special events. And for many of those reasons, we chose to partner with this group. We seem to have the same ideals.
Any questions for Jamie? We're really looking forward to this back on the Avenue, so we'll see if we're ribbon-cutting or whatever they cut at Farmers Markets on June 9th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We have one more presentation to make to our Public Works Department. May 18th to 25th was National Public Works Week, and in conjunction with this annual event, the Silicon Valley Chapter of the American Public Works Association annually recognizes outstanding projects that serve the public and make a difference in our quality of life. The Crestmore Reconstruction Project Phases 1 through 3 was submitted for an award by our design engineers, BKF engineers, and was selected for an award as the outstanding project in the $5 million to $25 million disaster emergency project category. The city was recognized for this award at the luncheon, APWA Luncheon, on May 15th. The city is proud of our city staff and contractors who contributed to this important project being recognized by public work professionals throughout the Bay Area. I'd like to ask our Public Works Director Clara Fabry to accept this award on behalf of staff. Clara? Very well deserved, considering all of the issues dealing with something so extraordinary. So, congratulations once again. Reviewing the agenda, if there's no objections, I'd like to move Item F to after Item G under Conduct of Business. Approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting of April 23rd and May 14, 2013. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, they'd be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
If there's no comments, move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, Item Number 8, there aren't any public hearings this evening. Item Number 9, public comment on items not on this agenda. As the council's policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? All right, move right into Item 10, Conduct of Business. First item is A, receive a report on education and enforcement activities for the 2013 fireworks season.
It's my privilege to address you this evening. Usually, it is Jim Allen, our Fire Marshal, who does this report. However, since I've not had the privilege to speak in front of you, I asked him if I could go ahead and do such. So with that, the purpose of the report tonight is for the city council on the planning activities that have been put forth by fire and the Police Department for the 2013 fireworks season and to seek the city council's approval of the proposed education and enforcement program. The report will include recommendations from both Fire and Police Department. In the previous years, the city council has directed staff to raise community awareness of the risks involved with fireworks use and strictly enforce the violations of illegal use. The fire service will be taking the lead on the education outreach. This kicks off on June 5th with the mandatory community meeting for the fireworks industry representatives and the community organizations, and that's June 5th at 5:30 at City Hall. In the middle of June, a front-page article will be displayed in focus regarding the safe and proper use of fireworks. The fireworks public service announcement will run across the cable-cross channels a minimum of 50 times a day from June 15th to July 6th, rather, sorry. Cable will also run a 15-minute state Fire Marshal video on fireworks safety at different times during that same time period, and will have 400 posters that will be posted on and around all booths, which will be inspected daily beginning June 28th. Also, flyers will be posted in all schools, public buildings, and the message will explain the no-tolerance theme for illegal fireworks. On the 4th of July, the day itself, we will staff an engine for a 24-hour period. We'll have both deputy chiefs assigned, as well as the Fire Marshal and myself during the peak periods, and depending on weather conditions, we may upstaff a second engine if required. So with that, as far as the enforcement portion goes, I will go ahead and hand it over to the fantastic Police Department.
Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the police component, we will again conduct a zero-tolerance campaign. This will include visits prior to the 4th by personnel at habitual problem areas within the city to advise those residents of our zero-tolerance campaign, and which can include a fine of up to $1,000 per offense. The department will also conduct additional firework enforcement patrols in the days prior to and after the 4th of July. All department personnel will be required to work on the 4th, with the exception of those on scheduled vacation. To supplement our own staffing, San Bruno officers will partner with officers from neighboring agencies to conduct enforcement patrol. This will allow our regular scheduled staff to handle non-firework-related matters. Officers will conduct strict enforcement with those individuals who are caught using illegal fireworks. As directed by this council, both the Police and Fire Departments pay particular attention to the 4th of July. Each year, this collaboration has provided a clear and concise message to the public, that being that illegal fireworks are dangerous and that violations of the use of these illegal fireworks will not be tolerated within the city. It's been shown over the past several years that our efforts have reduced the number of reports related to fireworks by over 61%. Over the past few years, there's been an apparent stabilization of reported fireworks violations. We will continue with this course. Regarding costs, the estimated cost for the proposed education and enforcement campaign is approximately $64,800. The estimated staffing costs for each section are as follows. Education and campaign costs are $4,500. Fire Department costs are $16,000. Police Department costs $43,200. And Public Works costs are $1,100. The recommendation before the council will once again allow the Police and Fire Departments to initiate the education and enforcement campaign, as well as allow Public Works the additional resources needed for the cleanup of the 2013 fireworks season. As with years past, the public is encouraged to call the Police Department and report firework violations or related problems areas within the city. This may be done anonymously. This concludes our report, and the Fire Chief and I are available to answer any questions if you have any.
Ken?
For both of you, is the cost the same? Is there slight increase adjustments from last year? And two, can you reiterate whether you were within the budgeted amount of last year?
I believe that we were slightly under the budget last year, and this year, we made preparations to be within that amount as well.
The same goes for fire. We were under the estimate last year, and we plan on being hopefully underneath the estimate. We put an extra just in case the weather conditions are such that we have to upstaff a second engine, and that's included in the cost.
And it just really surprises me for Public Works that $1,100 goes for extra cleanup throughout the city, because I know, you know, there's a lot more that I'm assuming that Public Works has to do to clean up, and I'm just, I'm very surprised that they can do it all within that budgeted amount.
If I could comment on that briefly, in prior years, this goes back, excuse me, I'm sorry. This goes back a ways, prior to the time when the city ordinance was in effect, and there was less direct enforcement, education, and other activities that led to a much more, a great deal more trash in the public areas. So we've actually had a fairly simple cleanup responsibility over the last several years. And I believe that that estimate is either close or on target with the actual extra level of effort that's expended in order to address the firework situation.
If I could, for the benefit of the public, we're talking about $64,800. If you can explain, I guess simply as possible, how that amount is recovered.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. The amount that is estimated here, and again, it's just an estimate, but as you've heard tonight, that amount has remained relatively consistent, and we do expect to be within the approximate $65,000 amount for the city's extra costs associated with this event. That amount is apportioned and paid for by the groups who sell fireworks each year, and according to the city's ordinance, those costs are apportioned by formula as follows. The city receives a report at the end of the season, at the end of the sales period, as to the total amount of gross receipts across all of the organizations that sell fireworks. Each group then sold a certain amount that then is identified as a percentage of the total gross receipts gleaned from the activity in San Bruno. So for example, if the total gross receipts were $700,000, and that's a number, I didn't pick that out of the air, that is a number that in one previous year was the approximate amount. Let's say a particular group sold approximately $70,000 worth of fireworks during the sales period. Their allocated percentage of the total gross sales would be 10%. Then that percentage is applied against the city's costs, and that group would be responsible for the commensurate 10% of the city's costs. So whatever your gross sales represent as a proportion of the total gross sales is then your share as a group of the extra costs incurred by the city. One thing that is important to note is that the costs are assessed by the city to the groups that sell fireworks. We are aware, but not involved in any manner, in a situation that occurs with some of the groups where they charge a surcharge, and some of them actually refer to it as a "city tax" that is applied to their sales. So some of the groups actually collect an additional amount as a surcharge from their customers in order then that they generate revenue to pay the city for its costs. Again, the city is not involved in any manner. We assess no surcharge. We assess no tax to customers of firework sales. We require each of the groups who benefit from the opportunity to sell fireworks in our town, we require them to cover the costs out of revenues that they generate from wherever. So I hope that clarifies, and I regret that some of the people who buy fireworks may actually think that the city is assessing them a surcharge, which is not entirely accurate.
Yeah, and I know it's complicated, and I would, speaking for the subcommittees, that I think we'll try and make a point at that meeting to explain and make sure that those groups know accurately how to inform the public.
Rico?
I have explained it every year. I do tell them that, but we'll do it again on the 5th.
Just for the educational aspect, just if it also can be reiterated through that, obviously, illegal fireworks are not permitted and in violation, but also just the proper use of the safe and sane, because obviously, unless things have changed, we didn't want them in the middle of the street. There are certain stipulations that we're looking for our own community to assist in the neighborhood, as well as for emergency vehicles to get through the neighborhood and to try to keep our youth protected as well. So if that can also be reached out and included.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for your report. Look forward to a safe season.
Great, thank you.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution accepting the revised San Bruno grade separation archway design concept.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, we are back in front of you with yet another iteration of the decorative arch feature on the San Bruno grade separation. We're very pleased and excited to see the progress of the grade separation structure, and it has progressed now to the point where, I know the city council is aware, that trains actually began to run on the top of the grade-separated structure effective just a day before yesterday on Sunday. So that was a significant milestone in the construction of this safety improvement in our town, and one which signals in a very tangible way the pending completion of this very long-term construction project in San Bruno. The item that's in front of you tonight is reconsideration of the decorative arch feature that, as I mentioned, has assumed the city council's attention on a number of previous occasions. Most recently, at your November 27th, 2012, meeting, at which time, the city council made a final approval of the design feature and some specific elements having to do with signage and structural supports to the, or decorative features associated with structural support to the archway feature. Tonight, we're back to you to discuss this matter in a little bit more, at a little bit of additional length, with several specific aspects of the design of both the arch and a couple of other of the area improvements associated with the grade-separated structure. I want to call to your attention what those items are, and then I'll ask Mark Simon of the JPB to walk through the PowerPoint presentation that the JPB has prepared for your consideration. Last week, staff from the JPB returned to the city to discuss with us certain design features associated with the arch, and in particular, with the structural supports that were recommended to you when you last received this presentation. At that time, the city council asked for a little bit more evaluation of those structural support elements that formed, in general, the shape of a W in the inside of the archway. And the JPB indicated that they would take a look at that and see if there was a way to make it not look quite so much like an alphabet letter, but something that was more generic and decorative. They have done that. I'll let the JPB staff identify for you what they've determined. In very short summary, the information that staff learned last week is that, in fact, as the design of the decorative feature has progressed, the JPB has in fact determined that there is no need for any internal structural support elements, and that in fact, the W or some version of a W or anything can be eliminated, and you could just have a plain archway. And again, Mark, we'll walk through that with you in more detail. But there is a need, given the timeline and the schedule that the JPB has outlined for this project, to work towards a decision fairly quickly. JPB would prefer tonight. So we want to make sure that you understand what the various issues are. Now, the second topic on which the JPB is requesting your decision-making has to do with the location of lettering that would identify San Bruno. Again, a very important feature of the archway overall design in that part of our interest is not just to provide a safe transit of trains through the community, which was the original interest in developing the grade-separated structure, but to provide an actual amenity, sense of place, and a little bit of an excitement about the entry to San Bruno. So including the name of San Bruno in a way that's clearly visible is important. The JPB will be looking for your decision-making tonight about exactly where the lettering should go. And thirdly, the JPB is interested in making sure that they have your final decision regarding the color of the interior illuminated glass on the archway itself, as well as the glass that was intended to be in a corresponding color inside of the, or rather, on the elevator tower on the west side of the structure. So again, Mark Simon will include all of those items in his presentation. I'm sorry, on the east side. I'm sorry, the elevator tower on the east side. Lastly, and these items are also outlined in the staff report that you received, I'd like to call to your attention a couple of other items, because as this design and development and construction process is rapidly moving to conclusion, there is little opportunity to make any additional changes to the design features associated with the grade separation and with the area surrounding both sides of the grade separation structure. So tonight, the JPB is prepared to show you the design feature and landscaping along the east side of the structure and along First Avenue, an important element of the project because it is directly across the street from our residents who live on First Avenue and who have now, for a very long period of time, tolerated what must seem like endless construction. And then second, and very important, I believe, is your final determination about the design and features associated with Posey Park. If you've been down to the area of the construction recently, you'll know that the project is quickly forming up the shape and the features associated with Posey Park, which have included a water feature that is kind of like a waterfall river that runs through the area that is the new location of Posey Park. For some time now, staff has wondered out loud whether that feature is going to remain an amenity, something that will look and operate nicely over a long period of time, or whether there's a possibility that that water feature may be something that requires more maintenance than the city is prepared to provide on a regular, ongoing basis. So I'd like you to, again, if you're willing to do that tonight, to take a look at the design of that feature and determine whether or not the water feature is something that we would like the JPB to continue to completion, or whether we'd like to make some sort of relatively modest design amendment at this point to provide a landscape treatment as opposed to a water treatment in that particular location. So with that, having outlined what I think are the primary issues associated with the grade separation, the design elements tonight, I'd like to ask Mark and the JPB staff to provide you with the detail in their PowerPoint.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and to the mayor for letting us put this on at such short notice. We are, especially when it comes to the archway and the aesthetic features, pretty much ending the design phase and beginning to enter into the construction phase, and that's one of the reasons why some of these elements have such a criticality to them in terms of how soon a decision has to be made. We are delighted that there's... We are delighted that there's now train service on the great separation. First of all, it's just a cool thing to see, but we're just thrilled that those intersections are now infinitely safer than they were just a few days ago. So thank you for all you've done. To reiterate, that's the last design we showed you back in November, the W, which I said stood for wonderful, but you said, well, maybe not, and the medallion, that's a rough drawing of it. I want to draw your attention before we move on to all the other angles and lines between the posts for the shelter, the posts for the railing, there'll also be electric wires eventually. And so one of the things that concerned us is if you kept the struts, it's a very busy visual aspect to it. And then we thought, because the struts are no longer structurally essential, they are decorative entirely, that provided us some opportunities to try some different things. So there's the W again. And there's something we thought we could certainly recommend, and we think this is more elegant, more simple. It's actually remarkably like what we originally started talking about, God knows how long ago. But anyway, we thought this was something that we found very appealing. We know that the city wants to have its mark on this as a clear indicator of which town this is. We talked about the medallion since it was going to hang from the W, and there's no W, you have to find someplace to put it, and the best place to put it is on the grade separation itself. That little squiggle to the right is the Caltrain logo. And I should add, none of our grade separations have the Caltrain logo on them. So if you don't want it, if you want it just to say San Bruno, that's something we could certainly accommodate. There's another way of hanging the medallion. And then we started looking at some strut alternatives. We didn't do a lot with it, partly because of our concern that there are just an awful lot of other visual features going on. There's one version where we also incorporate the medallion. Another one, looked like a V, and then we're back to what we thought the archway would look like in its final form if you approve this. So moving on from there, there's the elevator tower. We do have to have, we've always understood that there would be some color to this, that it would be a complement to the darker green of the archway, so this is our proposal for how that ought to look. Next is the east side, you may recall originally called for a fountain, a water feature. Some time ago, we discussed with the council and the city staff eliminating the water feature and turning it into a planter. So this is sort of our general concept about what that would look like, and we do need sort of final sign-off on the idea, although there's still some opportunities to tweak that part of it. Next is the landscaping on the east side at first and at Huntington. And there are a couple of trees in the Posey Park area that were damaged by the construction. They were redwoods, is that correct? And we're replacing them with these trees, which will have some really remarkable fall foliage on them, some nice colors. This is the water feature at Posey Park, and it's hard to see. It's one of the things that's frustrated us from the beginning, and we appreciate the difficulty of providing these things to the council and giving any sense of proportionality, either with the archway or this. But this is the water feature. It's, if you can see carefully or closely at the bottom, it flows over the edge in a couple of places. There's some fountains that shoot up, and it really sort of creates certainly Posey Park as a dynamic sense of place. Where are we next here? This is the hardscape. This is the, I'm sorry, Clara. We had some discussion about whether or not to have curved paving or squared off paving, and if you see, should be one more, Clara, the next slide. Go back one then, go back another one. There we go. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, that pattern is repeated throughout most of the great, most of the project for paving. It just creates, instead of squared off, it creates a sense of flow, it creates a sense of unity with the rest of the project. And I apologize for going so fast, but we did provide all this information to the council in advance in the hope that we could not take up too much of your time and also give you a chance to look at this stuff in a setting other than this one, because as we know, it's a little difficult to envision what we're talking about. So as the city manager said, we do have some critical and important decisions. Next slide, Clara. We do have also a mock-up, it's a sectional mock-up that we'll talk a little bit more about in a moment or two, but we know it's difficult to fully understand what the lighting will look like at night, since we're not outdoors and the lights are on. And so we want to actually build a model for a couple of sections of it, not the whole archway, to show what the lighting effect would be. That'll be, that's actually at the site, and we can talk further about that. And then there's a last decision. Field Peoli, the design architects, recommended that the pedestrian vehicular underpasses have some color to them. Frankly, none of us are thrilled with the color, and we don't think we need it, but since we've demonstrated it to you in past iterations, we thought we ought to make sure that you at least know what we're thinking about and give you the chance to make the decision. So the set of decisions that we're facing right now, the reason why we have to make the decision about the struts right now is we need to order the steel for the archway. Although the struts will not be critical to supporting the archway, they will be attached to it, and we have to order basically every, we have to order the steel preformed in a way that will accommodate struts, or whatever you want to call them, those decorative features if you want them. So we kind of have to make that decision. If not now, then very, very much resembling now. The next question, of course, would be the medallion, where you want that located, the elevator glass, and the water feature. East side water feature redesigned to a planter, and there's another category of 30% design that's really an issue for the city staff to address. So happy to answer any questions or hear any responses.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mark, can you explain, and I can appreciate when you, when the decision-makers or the designers were trying to simplify things, can you explain what we're looking at? We have some verticals there, we also have, I know what the railing is, the guardrail is. What about the other panels that are on each side of the arch, each end of the arch? Are those on the same plane, or are they, are they the screens that are on the other opposite side?
Actually, what you're seeing there are the screens that are on the east side. I should add, by the way, one of the concerns the council had in the past with the W or whatever it might have been, was the accessibility it might, temptation it might provide to people to try and jump on the archway. This will certainly solve that problem. Is that correct? We do also have other staff here, Alex Jenkins from HNTV, Ash Kalani from Caltrain, and also Raphael, with whom you're well familiar right now. But what you're seeing is what's on the east side. Is that correct, Raphael?
Yeah, that's correct. Just real quickly, the platform itself is actually...
You got to come over here.
Never been accused of talking softly before. The platform is actually semicircular in plan view, so the arch is actually closer to you than the grade separation. So it's standing off some distance. So in the past, remember, we were showing it actually flush with the grade sep. Now we're showing it away from the platform, and that was for the reason that Mark was talking about, was we wanted to preclude people from jumping on it or playing on it or what have you. So what you're seeing, yeah, on the east, to the north and south of that, what you're seeing are the existing shelters, and then the vertical elements are the poles for the OCS.
Okay, so the shelters, I've seen that at construction, the west side shelter's structure has gone up, but not on the east side yet. So I would assume that if there were no arch, that that shelter would go in place of the arch? Is that what the plan was?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If the arch was not there, if the arch was not there...
You'd see the shelters on both sides.
But would the shelter continue all the way, all the way through? Or is it just, or is it just located where it is?
No, that's actually per plan, so there is a gap.
Would you please, Raphael, come to the podium and explain?
Right, so I guess the question was, if you didn't build an arch, would the shelters be the whole length of the platform? And the answer is no, it's a little similar to on the west side. You have some portions that are sheltered, and then you have some gaps that are windscreen and some that are just railing, as you've seen. So really, all that's added to this image is the arch itself.
Okay, so there is no, there is no overlap of the arch and the shelter?
Correct, there is not.
And the only thing, generally in that same plane of the arch, would be the guardrails, which are down about four feet high?
Correct. The one caveat to that is if, were there not a train in that picture, you would actually see the windscreen on the other side. But on the east side, that's a correct statement. There's the, pretty much just the handrail.
Okay. Couple, and then I can get on to my comments on the actual arch. So the proposal from, from the designer is to have that mustard-colored paint underneath?
Well, yeah. But the only reason it's a proposal is because it's been in this drawing since the beginning. It's something we can pass on, or we can choose a different color if you prefer. There's also lighting underneath there, and that lighting does have the ability to control not just the brightness, but the color. Is that correct? Yeah, so you can, you can affect different colors with the lighting. I mean, you can make it orange at Halloween if you wanted to, or if the Giants win another World Series.
Okay, and then the east, the east side elevator tower is the only one we're talking about as far as colored glass?
Yes.
Because on the, directly on the opposite side, on the west side, it's the same design of an elevator shaft, but will be clear glass or some standard type of glass.
Yes.
Okay. All right. My, again, I can appreciate the, you feeling that it might be too busy, but as a designer and wanting to see structure, whether or not it is functional or not, I believe the struts are necessary. And my, my solution that I've drawn on all of these, all of these sketches was just to add another leg. Instead of a U, instead of a W, then you just come back down, because there was a gap to bring down another, another diagonal.
So it looks almost like a trestle bridge?
Right, yeah. And that, to me, is a, is a more accurate resemblance of what, what that type of bridge would be like.
Okay.
Water feature?
Yeah, and as far as the color, as far as the color of the elevator shaft, I really, it really doesn't, it really wasn't something that I felt compelled to, you know, to match colors with the arch and the elevator glass, so whatever, whatever gets decided on that is fine. I'm fine with the change on the east side of landscaping in lieu of water feature. I, I really got to, I guess that was one of our main concerns, and I really don't understand the paving pattern. Why, you know, I almost chuckle when I see the explanation that the paving pattern was modeled after an artichoke, so I think that's what's really busy, you know, in the paving. So I think that could, you know, cost-wise and simplification, I think would, you know, would be better with the paving.
Why don't we do this, why don't we go through?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, if we keep the W and just add two more legs, then you're satisfied with the medallion being where originally it was proposed in the middle of the W? So I just wanted to make sure that I understood you correctly, Mr. Barra.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Let's, let's talk about the archway first, so we don't get it too mixed up here. So we have Ken's opinion of the archway. Rico, what about you? You're going to pass, okay. Irene?
Could you go to the plain one? Thank you. I appreciate Ken's comments, but I like the cleanliness of it or the elegance of just the plain archway, and I like where the medallion is. So I would leave that where it is. I like the green tinted glass. So there, so there. And then the mustard underneath color, you can let that one go. I really, I think part of what's deceiving is the concrete that's showing on this is gray, but that's not what it's painted now, and I really like the color that it's being painted. It's a kind of a warm beige, I guess. So if you just continue that, I think it would be even less busy, it'll be more uniform. So that's my opinion on those two.
We could certainly have that emulate exactly what's on the sides of the walls.
Yeah, and it, well, and then if you do that, maybe make the medallion green, so it shows up more. So the arch and the medallion are green, and everything else is the cream color.
Michael?
Well, I think everybody knows what my opinion is about the arch in general, so I won't dwell on that, but...
If you had to have an arch, what would you?
I think I agree with Irene's comments in terms of preference of having a cleaner design, the medallion location, and the color as well. I had a question, though, regarding the cost. Now that the design can be done in structurally more simple fashion, is that going to somehow reduce the price? And I think one of the urgency items we talked about before was actually integrating the structure into the platform itself. It looks like that requirement went away, and possibly that buys us a little more time in terms of the construction of this thing. So being that we can extend the timeframe and being that it's a simpler structure, can we expect to see some savings?
Probably not. The fact is, if you look at the illustration here, you see that there are already, there are separate independent footings for the archway. So although it's no longer attached directly to the grade separation, it does have its own support, that has its own requirements. You know, we won't know, you know, definitively about the cost until we're much farther along, but we tend to think that the estimate we gave the council in January is probably still the right ballpark.
And in terms of the structural stability, the city gets pretty windy at times, and without having that, any support in the center, is any, have you guys done some kind of structural analysis on how much play there is on, on the structure and whether that's going to weaken the plexiglass that's in there and cause cracking that might make it...
Well, it will be a steel structure.
Okay.
But let's have Raphael talk.
Yeah, thank you. So, no, it's a good question. In order to make a self-supporting arch like you see there, what you actually have is there's a ribbon of steel that runs inside it, which is sort of the skeleton behind it, and then the cladding is aesthetic. So in order to accomplish this, we actually had to add more steel. That's part of the reason why I was looking at Mark saying, no, the cost isn't going to go down, because we've added more steel into the arch itself, and we've taken some of the steel away from the struts. So we did look at the winds, and in order to, exactly right, the wind is actually what governs the design in this case, and so we had to do a beefier steel section to account for that.
The price isn't going up either?
No.
Okay.
I like that little laugh. I do want to duly note for the record that yes, it does get windy in San Bruno.
Rico? As far as the, start on the, underneath the mustard color, not a fan. I saw the both designs on the arch, I do like the version we have up here, as far as that, taking Irene's comments, the cleaner, less clutter. I also have a concern on the support as well. It, on occasion, it can get windy in San Bruno, and I do wonder, is that going to be to where it rattles, or, I mean, I understand it's, everything's great, just like the price won't go down, but it hopefully won't go up, but it's somewhere in the middle. So if that's the support mechanism that we're going to have, and then the wind comes and it's there, and I can tell you, if Councilmember Salazar's here, you're not going to be able to come back and ask for more money to support that better. So I still have a concern, too, on the support, as well as its vibration or true wind and all of that stuff.
We appreciate your concern. I don't know if we have a better answer for you than the one we've already given you, which is our, our engineers are comfortable that this, this is designed and structurally sound.
So does that mean you support the simpler one?
As in... As indicated, yes.
Okay. I also support the simpler arch. I think the future electrification lines with any kind of W or M or whatever it is is really going to, you know, mighty it up. So I like it much simpler. I'd like the tunnel, the walkways lit with color. I think if we can establish a neutral color, it's going to be a lot easier to maintain with lighting and not paint. I also go along with the color on the elevator shaft. And I want the simpler paving. I know where we got that artichoke idea, but simpler paving is better. And I'm also in favor of the planter versus the horrific future maintenance of some type of a water feature, which is going to be filled with all kinds of bubbles and ivory flakes over the years. So I could see it coming.
Green dye on safety.
Yeah. Let me see here, I had a question here.
So the medallion located, on the physically located where we have it on this drawing?
I do, the question I, well, the comment on the medallion, I'd like to see it fairly three-dimensional so it stands out, so it has some shadow and some pop to it, not just a sign type of thing. So I'd like to see, you know, the lettering and the surround of the medallion actually stand out. So it really does say, you know, San Bruno and not just a sign.
Okay.
And as far as Caltrain, I think San Bruno's enough.
I second that.
It's not like somebody's going to mistake it for somebody else's.
No, they'll see that on the train going by, so, right, exactly.
Well, we understand that. We have been in support all along of the idea that this is something San Bruno can really make a statement with about itself. And so we understand that. It's why I made the point of saying we don't have to put our name on it.
Let me ask the council, the rest of the council, haven't chimed in on the elevator color, also the paving and the planter versus the water feature?
The paving, I have the same concerns that have been raised by Ken yourself. The elevator, I'm in favor, Mr. Mayor, the way you had addressed it. I need to understand better the water feature. I guess I'm having a visual and I've been on the subcommittee of driving through and saying, just it's an added feature. I understand what Jim's saying too, is that there's possibly a maintenance. So what is that cost? What is the cost of that versus that? What is not only to maintain it but also, you know, I guess the city would be maintaining it, or is it, or would you?
Well, there are two different water feature related decisions. The one we're asking for tonight only is, the original plans called for a water feature on the east side with the subcommittee and through extensive conversations with the staff, we were directed and we agreed what's eliminated from the east side and that's why there's a planter, a set of planter boxes there, a planter features that we put in place and we showed you one of those slides. The question that the city manager is concerned about is the water feature in the Posey Park area. And I'd like to get to that after we deal with these issues. Because the ones we're talking about now are the ones that we really needed a decision on as soon as possible. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that the council is ready to make those decisions.
Well, you haven't given us a lot of choice in that matter either.
What?
Every time you come here, you don't give us a lot of choice as far as time.
You've figured out my strategy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've had a lot of conversations about an east side aesthetic feature. I think this is not exactly a late-breaking development. But that being said, we, project continues to move along, as you know, and it's sort of time to make decisions about some of this stuff. You know, we're just working as closely as we can with the city staff to try and figure it out. And we do appreciate the fact that we had to bring this to the council on fairly short notice. It's one of the reasons we tried to provide as much information ahead of time so that you didn't come here and see these things for the first time, which we've also been known to do. So I thought we were actually learning a lesson or two from our prior performance.
Well, I haven't had the privilege of sitting on the subcommittee, so I just figure, you know, when I have opportunities, I'll speak here.
You'll take them, yes, I understand.
Thank you.
It's like, you'll be very, so when you come to a fork in the road, take it.
City manager has something.
I just wanted to clarify that there is a decision in front of the city council tonight to, having to do with the east side treatment at the station site itself. And it might be a good idea as you're moving towards doing here, Mr. Mayor, to take these issues one at a time. So you have the arch, you have the colors associated with the arch, you have the lettering, the struts. You also have, the council has previously made a decision to eliminate a previously proposed water feature at the station site in favor of landscaping. And the decision before you tonight is to authorize the landscaping as shown by the JPB in that vicinity on the east side of the station itself. Then if you could get to Posey Park after those series of decisions, staff would appreciate that.
That's Posey Park. Claire, if you could go back to the other one, which was the east side? There you go. This is what we're proposing in lieu of the water feature for the landscaping. And it's also in the materials.
And if I could interject, being on the subcommittee for 10 years now, I really do not recall any discussion of a water feature on the east side. So the discussions that have gone on through the subcommittee and leading up to tonight, I believe that, you know, we are, at least the subcommittee, has decided that the landscape replacement is, you know, is the way to go. With that said, the subcommittee and the previous committee of, you know, the Citizens Advisory Committee, were presented with a design, a schematic design of Posey Park, which included a water feature, very similar to what is up on the screen right now. We've only really seen it in plan view. We've seen a couple of artist renditions of how it might look from a distance, but not in a lot of detail. I know that this, you know, there's been some sort of pattern and then there's been a pattern of trees, you know, within the area, but not a lot of discussion or detail as far as how that water was going to travel and how it was going to spill out in certain areas. So we're, you know, seeing all this detail, you know, really for the first time in 10 years.
Yeah, we, I understand. It's true, the subcommittee did make it pretty clear that the east side should be landscaped and not include a water feature. And we proceeded accordingly. And really, what this is about tonight is to give you an idea of where we ended up with the landscaping, getting sort of final sign-off on the idea that we're going to landscape it. There's still some flexibility. I mean, plants are plants. We can make some of those decisions about what we plant there pretty late in the process. That's not a decision that's as critical so much as making sure that the council understands that we've proceeded with the direction of eliminating the water feature on the east side and putting in landscaping instead.
If I could also, can you expand on what sort of wall treatments we're looking at? You know, and are those the accurate colors that we're going to be faced with?
I think I'd ask Alex Jenkins to come up and talk about that a little bit.
Because I know we have, I mean, we have a very distinct pattern for the grade separation wall. And how will that transition to the walls that, for these planters and the large staircases?
Okay, so what you're looking at, let's see. So if you look at the lower left-hand side, elevation A, you'll see that the, there was a water feature, there were a lot of cascading elements in there. Those have been taken away to sort of simplify the view of this area. The wall treatment is a series of architectural reveals, those horizontal lines that match the horizontal lines of the elevator glass. That also falls in with the planters down below. The color is accurate. You know, it looks, probably the closest will be on your printout rather than the screen. But that's pretty close, you know, which you can actually, if you actually go out to the grade separation site, you'll see the color that they're actually painting the walls now. And that would be the same color as here.
It's the same as the walls.
Okay, so when you say horizontal lines, is that formed in concrete or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a relief.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have four or five things to decide tonight. The arch, it sounds like four out of five would like the simpler design without the W or M.
I can accept the simpler design.
Okay, all right, that's five out of five. There you go. The medallion centered there where it shows, is that acceptable, Ken?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Michael?
But, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to go back to your comments about the 3D and about the single San Bruno. I'd like to see that included.
Okay.
And green.
And green, I heard. I heard one person say green.
Yes, what about green, guys? Because the rest of it's going to be, yeah, because the rest of it's going to be the color, this color, the rest of the concrete. It's not going to be gray, is that correct?
Right.
So you're going to have a, you're going to have this color of concrete with a not much different color medallion. So in my opinion, you should have something that pops out, which would be a contrasting color, which would be the green to go with the arch.
Can you, you can do part of that with a mock-up and show us exactly what it looks like?
Yeah, maybe not with a mock-up, but we can certainly demonstrate to some different drawing choices.
Sure, okay.
All right, so the medallion and the location we have decided. Let's see.
The elevator glass?
Landscaping, elevator glass.
Green, light green.
Yes, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, you got that?
And it'll be lighter green than the archway itself because people need to see in and out.
Right, exactly.
The chief of police will tell you it's a safety issue.
Okay, the landscaping at the station site, that's acceptable to everyone?
That's the east side water feature redesigned to propose planters.
Well, we're talking about the landscaping at the station site.
Yeah.
This, yes.
Okay. No water feature.
Correct.
Right, okay. Did you have something?
I just wanted to make sure throughout all of these plantings that we're looking at drought tolerant and plants that are except or?
Native.
Native, thank you. I was trying to figure out what word to use. Native to that microclimate or would be tolerant to that microclimate. Because as you know, it's windy and doesn't get a lot, yes, it gets a lot of rain or, you know, the sun goes and comes and goes, so.
What we plant is really a decision that we defer to the city staff.
Okay.
And I know that they have standards and design preferences.
Our park recreation staff reviewed all of the plans and based on their recommendation, JPB is changing all of the landscape design based on city's request.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. And then the, is it the last thing, the Posey Park water feature?
Yeah, and that goes back to, certainly as Councilman Ibarra said, this has been something that's been incorporated into Posey Park for a long time, but we do want to be sensitive. It is a significant maintenance commitment that is on, according to our construction and maintenance agreement, is the city's responsibility. So we don't want to just barrel through without a full recognition that this could be something that can get complicated. We've all seen fountains that aren't necessarily well-maintained or that often don't work all the time. I don't mean to be pessimistic about what might happen here, but it is something to be, it should be factored into the decision.
Okay. Ken, Posey Park water feature?
I'd like to, I'd like to keep the water feature at Posey Park. I'd like a little more information as to how, you know, how we are going to deal with maintenance. I also like to know a little bit more about how Caltrain is, I'm assuming Caltrain is going to maintain their landscaping, or are they?
It's, I honestly don't remember, but I think it's.
Yeah, and how, you know, and if they do, what's your track record? I mean, what's, you know?
Well, you can go to our other grade-separated train stations like San Carlos, it looks to me like we've kept it up pretty well.
And the thing is, yeah, and I've seen, I've seen maintenance at the other stations, you know, especially at the grade steps, I've been paying attention to. So those are ongoing things and so I just wanted to be, from my knowledge, know better that Caltrain is doing this and the city is going to be asked to do this.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, just for clarification, based on our memorandum of understanding with JPB, JPB is responsible to maintain, including the landscape in the station. Posey Park will be city's responsibility. Will be city's responsibility, the water feature itself, or if will be replaced with landscape, then still will be the city's responsibility.
Well, with that said, I think we need some discussion as to what that's going to entail.
So we have a very.
Staffing-wise, budget-wise.
We have a rough estimate that we can only verify for planning purposes of between $15,000 and $18,000 a year is, again, a planning level estimate for the additional cost associated with maintaining the water feature. I would just identify that as, and again, staff has not engaged other than in reviewing the design for accuracy as, in terms of conformance with previously represented design concepts. The, we have not had the opportunity to do a detailed evaluation of, I heard tonight, there were water flowing down the sides and fountain aspects of this that may present unknown maintenance-related issues for the city. We do not, to my knowledge, have any significant water features anywhere else in town, so this isn't something that we have a great deal of experience with.
I think it's interesting to have a water feature, but I'm not totally married to it because I'm just, it's unfortunate that we have to think about vandalism, that we have to think about the unexpected. And when I say about maintenance, this is not the old Posey Park. The old Posey Park was a bunch of trees and a couple of benches. This is now a plaza that's going to need a lot more than just cleaning paper out of the water or something. This can be trashed in no time with papers and leaves and garbage and everything. And I think it needs some real, you know, significant thought as to how we're going to keep this image up of a clean, nice plaza area. And if it means sacrificing water to be able to have the city maintain a nice, clean plaza area as a gateway to our city, then I think we need to, you know, really make that hard decision.
Okay. So you're ready to make a hard decision?
No. We purposely divided some of these issues into two different categories. One were critical and you've addressed all those already.
Okay.
Others are important, which means that the time is running, but we don't have to have a decision tonight. I think it's eminently reasonable for the city to ask, what is it getting itself into in terms of maintaining this feature?
I was going to say, since, and that's what I thought Mark and you were saying, was on this item, I think the city manager said it too, that wasn't critical that we had to have a decision on this tonight. But I'm also interested in, for me, the water feature. I like the idea, I like something different, something to add the aesthetics and new in this community. But I also, and one as many people know with the budget, I want to have a plan and I want to know what, how, not you, how we're going to maintain it with current staffing, resources and funds. So, you know, I know there's a lot of technology out there and that we do have to think about vandalism, we have to think about graffiti, we have to think about site visibility and to make sure that things are out in the open. So I need to have more of information on that.
If I might, just for point of clarification, when is it that the JPB would need a decision if the city council were to decide that they did not want a water feature? What is your timeline for that decision?
Well, we have to start laying some pipes pretty soon, I would think. How soon do we need to know, Rafael?
I mean, we can put in pipes now.
You don't have to fill them.
It was nice of me to commit him to something that's not true.
I don't have, I can find that out for you. I don't have the exact scheduled date for when we put the pumps in. I mean, obviously, the water feature is going up as we speak, so whatever else it would be other than a water feature would have to look a lot like a water feature. You know, we haven't put the pumps in yet. I could find out if we've procured pumps. But I would say that decision would have to be made very soon if we're going to, I mean, the cost escalates every time we order something that we can't use, so.
So very soon, is that two weeks?
All right, I'll go back and check, but yeah, probably. All right, I'll go back and check, but yeah, probably.
All right.
Through the chair?
Irene?
I like the shape of what you have, I like the idea, I like the curve of it, I think it's a very elegant addition. I can, very concerned, as the other gentlemen are, that it's going to be a mess in no time. Remember the wind, remember the, the trash that comes, that gets blown down. Is it possible to keep the shit, to keep everything except the actual water part? And maybe make those, make it into benches and put blue tile on the back so that it has that look to it? I mean, if we say no water feature today or even in two weeks, what are our alternatives? Just, you know, blank cement, what?
Well, I, I would think the decision's not all that dissimilar to what we just did on the east side, which is, it's an opportunity to landscape it and turn it into something that's more than just a, a cement structure that looks like it was meant to be a fountain and is just an empty box instead, but, I mean, as Raphael said, every time we change, and this has been in the, this has been in the project design virtually from the beginning, so that's one of the reasons why it seems like we're coming and telling you that you don't have a lot of choices, because these things have been moving along at pace.
The only thing I was gonna comment, as far as, Irene, maybe it's benches, I would just worry about the situation we had at the former Posey Park with benches and where they're placed and just to be, I was conscientious about that for other sites.
Why don't we do this, Michael, how do you feel about the water feature? Do you have a feeling right now?
I like the water.
You like the water?
I like the water.
Ken, you're still up in the air?
No, I, I'd like to keep the water, it's just that, you know, it's, it's been in, yeah, it's been here, it's been drawn for ten years, but it's always been drawn like this. It's always been a bird's eye view, there's been, you know, you need a magnifying glass to really understand what's going on. I see it better now than I have in ten years, is, you know, is seeing this slope. So, to say that it's been here, it's, you know, we're supposed to be the client, we're supposed to be the ones that are making the decisions on whether we like it or not. And it's almost as if I'm looking at it from a distance. I'm looking at it, say, this is what, you know, is this what you want? And so, well, jeez, can I get closer to look at it? No, you know, this is about as close as you can get. So, I can appreciate, you know, my colleagues here saying they like it and everything, but do we really know what we're getting? And I think if we make a decision that we keep the water feature, then we'll, 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 we'll love it, we'll, we'll get to, get to, get to keep it. But I still want to know what is, what is actually going on, because these are very preliminary-looking plans here, they're not really detailed and they're not really giving me a good feel, giving anybody a good feel of, you know, how the space is working, so.
I have to agree.
I'm sure it's gonna look great.
I have to agree with, with Ken, you know, we're looking at a, if you will, a schematic of this, and you're telling us that you have pipes in the ground and you're ready to put pumps in, pumps in that show what? What is it? I mean, you kind of gave us an idea, but that's all it is, is an idea. And if in fact you could show us a little bit more detail on what's gonna happen, where it's gonna flow, how it's gonna cascade, that would be great, then we can make a decision. But I still have a concern about maintenance, but, you know, maybe I could be swayed. I think you probably have your answers on everything else, well, except for the paving, I'm, I'm assuming everybody agreed to the, the simpler paving, Michael?
I don't like artichokes.
You don't, no, okay.
So, the simpler paving.
The simpler paving.
Okay.
I like artichokes, but I do like the simpler.
So the only thing that's still up in the air is this, is this water feature, what it looks like, so we can actually make a decision on something that we can see. And I think you have to bring it back to us.
Yep, I understand, I think that's very reasonable. The, on the other hand, anybody.
Also, is there a designer, there is someone that has been working on this water feature, I'm sure, and, and that, that person may be able to.
Draw a bigger picture.
You know, be able to explain it a little better, you know, and, you know, and say, oh, the water's gonna come here and you're, you know, here, this sort of stuff, and you're gonna, you're gonna see water coming down and it's gonna look neat as it comes down, you know, to this session and such, so.
Well, we'll work with your city staff to get more, better information, better sense of what this is.
All right.
Provide you what you need to make your decision.
And I, and I also wanted to add that, you know, what, what's on the drawing, what's on the screen now, this is definitely what we were looking at, you know, way back when as the treatment for a two-track alignment on, on First Avenue.
Right.
So, it's, again, gotta use a magnifying glass, but I, I believe that First Avenue residents are gonna be treated with some nice buffer of landscaping and, and somewhat of a landscaped terraced hill.
That is another issue, is, is there consensus on this landscaping? And I realize, again, this is not the best way to show everything, this is all foliage and trees that were selected by the city staff in accordance with the city's own standards.
I think it reflects what we talked about many times.
I guess. Do the, thank you, do the different colors mean anything? Like the blue-green means different vegeta, it just looks like circles and stuff?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, there are some pictures that we actually saw that the JPB has that I think show a better, they show a street-level view of the landscaping along the wall at First Avenue, and since we're gonna bring back the water feature at Posey Park, I think it would be useful to bring that back as well, so that you can actually, this is very difficult, this is very difficult to interpret, I would hate for you to make your decision based on something you can't really see.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a very good idea.
Right, yeah, okay, so, you have your answers on.
If I may speak to, to one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I know that some plexiglass and some perforated metal was being passed out.
Right here, right.
We've been talking for quite some time, and unfortunately, this is the best example we can give you, and I liken it to trying to buy an eight-foot sofa when you're looking at a three-inch square fabric swatch, I've never been very good at that. So I just want to reiterate that we are building a mock-up.
Right.
It's only if a couple of sections, one at the very top, so you get an idea of how thick it is, and one closer to the bottom, so you get a sense of the proportion of that. It's a scale mock-up of those two sections that will include this perforated metal, it will include the plexiglass, and include the lighting scheme, so that you can come see it at night. It's in a protected part of the site, so that it doesn't require you to wear a hard hat when you go look at it or anything like that. And we'll work with the city staff to find out when it makes the most sense for you, either to go collectively, if you have to go as the city council, or perhaps go individually, I don't know if it qualifies as a serial communication, if it's us telling you something. But we'll work that out and have that information and have that, that mock-up available for you to go see, so you can fully understand what we're trying to do with the lighting and what kind of landmark it'll be at night.
Okay, sounds good, so.
And it's, it's guaranteed not to rattle.
Not to rattle?
Yeah, rattle. I mean, there's a lot of components there, and now you're, you know, you got one steel beam, and now you, you're taking this plexiglass and, and metal sheet, wrapping it, and, and also with lighting inside, and it's not gonna rattle.
So I've been informed.
Okay, before, before we do something formal, I'd like to hear from Mr. Rico.
I had one question back on the color of the San Bruno underpass, where was that mustard-yellow or whatever, have you decided, is there the potential to take the color that they're now painting on the, the structure and use that underneath the overpass, San Br, all the overpasses, so that you're not introducing another, another color? Just, that was my.
Okay.
That, that was my suggestion.
You're now painting, like behind Artichoke Joe, you're, you're painting the surface of your elevated stuff. That light cream color, whatever, use that and wrap that around, because you're gonna do the face of that.
The same color as the rest of the walls.
Yeah.
Yes.
Through there, instead of a mustard yellow.
And then that still leaves the lighting, which provides a remarkable range of flexibility.
Right, exactly.
But, Mr. Mayor, if we might, I, I would suggest that we bring back three items to you. One is the landscape treatment, better, better plan view pictures of the landscape treatment along First Avenue. The water feature and design landscape treatment at Posey Park, and thirdly, the lighting underneath the station site at San Bruno Avenue, in order that you can confirm your decision to eliminate the mustard-yellow color and be satisfied with a choice that is the, consistent with the rest of the arch, the, I'm sorry, of the grade separation structure, and you know what the lighting is going to do underneath that important area of the, of the structure.
I, I agree, and the, the item does call for adoption of resolution though, so should we do some of these items?
What we would recommend is that your action tonight, we will amend the resolution accordingly to capture the decisions that we understand you are making about the arch itself, the medallion with the words San Bruno, and.
Pavers.
The simplification of the pavers.
The landscaping at the station site.
Glass in the elevator, and the color of the arch.
Okay.
And affirming that we're redesigning the water feature on the east side to the proposed planner.
Right.
Landscaping.
Right. So we will, assuming that those are your decisions, as we've heard the discussion tonight, we'll amend the resolution to address only those items.
Okay, all right, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think it would be a good idea if you wouldn't mind taking a vote to, to confirm those items related to the resolution, so that we can make that.
While it's fresh in my mind, I'll, I'll make that motion. To accept.
There, a second.
A second. Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to accept the five items that the city manager just clarified. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Item 10C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction, Phase III Utility Replacement Project with JMB Construction, Inc. in the amount of six million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and approving a construction budget of nine million, thirty thousand dollars, one, thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Sorry about that. The item before you tonight is the award of the Crestmore Reconstruction Phase III Utility Replacement Project. And what the project entails is, as shown up here on the screen, the area in green, I apologize, the area in red is the Phase III reconstruction area. We recently have completed the Phase II improvements, which is the area shown in blue there. Those improvements were the underground, all the underground wet utilities within the fire-damaged area. The project before you tonight is now going into the remaining area of the neighborhood and replacing all of those wet utilities. When I say wet utilities, I'm talking about sanitary sewer, water, new storm drain, and also in this portion of the project, we're adding the streetlight conduits for the future streetlight replacement. Recognizing the particular sensitivity of this neighborhood, the bid documents for this project included beefed-up project qualifications, and those included the requirement for the contractor to have a dedicated full-time project superintendent, a dedicated safety officer, and a dedicated community liaison. Additionally, we included a special conditions section in these bid documents, and the special conditions outlined forty special conditions that the contractor had to comply with or has to comply with as part of this construction, to make sure that the construction is within the standard of care required for this particular neighborhood, that the project is safe, and that the project addresses some of the concerns that have arisen in the previous projects. And examples of these include holding the contractor to standards related to no use of foul language, for example, on the site, no speeding of construction vehicles, dust control, street sweeping, resident coordination, traffic control, and the requirement to hold frequent construction open houses to keep the public informed during the construction process. Additionally, we added something unique in this project, which is a performance bonus, and that's a dollar amount of sixty thousand dollars, performance bonus that the contractor is entitled to if he meets certain threshold requirements for performance during the contract. And what we've done is we've given the contractor a threshold of three violations of these special conditions, if he stays below three violations, he will be awarded that performance bonus, anything above that, he will not be awarded the performance bonus. We've also backloaded that bonus, by that I mean, he will receive a majority of the bonus, forty thousand dollars of that bonus, at the end of the project, when we issue the notice of final completion. So that, again, that's incentive for the contractor to maintain and comply with these conditions throughout the life of the contract. So we advertised the project in March of this year and opened bids on May 7th. We received six bids, given the size of this project, the engineer's estimate at seven point one million dollars, the complexity, as well as the special conditions, we received some bids from contractors that don't normally bid within San Bruno, so we did get attention of, of many of the large contractors within the Bay Area. The low bidder when we opened the bids was JMB Construction Company, their bid was six point four million dollars, that was about nine percent below the engineer's estimate and about twelve percent below the second bidder. A review of JMB's bid, it was determined to be responsive and mathematically correct, however, two questions arose regarding their safety record, and I'll take a minute to go, go through those items. In 2008, JMB had an incident in South San Francisco during, during the construction of a sewer project there, they hit a two-inch diameter PG&E gas distribution line that required immediate evacuation of the area and PG&E coming in to do an emergency repair of that line. Also, in 2009, they experienced a project-related death via electrocution on a sewer project that they were doing up in Novato. So in light of these concerns, staff performed a great deal of additional due diligence above and beyond the normal, normal project review that, that, that we do. As part of that, what, what, what we determined was, the 2008 incident in South San Francisco with the gas distribution line, that was actually a line that was live, but it was to an abandoned building, a, a building that was no longer used. JMB performed all of the required USA Underground Service Alert notifications. Unfortunately, PG&E missed marking that line because it was to a building that was not occupied and there was no service to it. PG&E acknowledged that that was their oversight and that it was not JMB's fault in that incident. Regarding the 2009 fatality, OSHA fully investigated that incident, JMB was fined accordingly, it was a very unfortunate incident, one of the byproducts of that was that JMB completely overhauled their safety program within their company, they hired additional safety personnel, including a veteran of twenty-five years in the safety industry. Since then, JMB, for the past two years, has been recognized in the construction industry for having zero job-site safety violations of contractors of a similar size, and when I say similar size, that's in the seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand man-hours category. We also did some checking with PG&E, and although PG&E does not track or release officially results of contractor incidences with their underground facilities, we were told by PG&E that JMB's incident history is below normal for underground contractors in the Bay Area, and that their construction folks consider JMB a quote "good contractor," end quote. We also performed pretty extensive reference checks with JMB's, of, of JMB's references with other municipal utilities. They all checked out very well, they got high praise, in fact, at least two of the other agencies said that if they could, they would give JMB their projects exclusively if they didn't have to go through a public bid process. So, we did take one additional step. So we did take one additional step and last week held a pre-award meeting with JMB. That's something that we normally don't do. We normally issue a notice of intent to award the bids, which starts the official bid protest period. Before we issued that notice of award, notice of intent to award, we wanted to sit down with JMB and discuss their safety programs, reiterate their understanding of the uniqueness of work in this neighborhood, and fully discuss the city and the neighborhood's expectations during the construction process. A representative of JMB is here this evening to answer any questions that the council may have at the conclusion of this presentation as well. In summary, on this project, we've taken five specific measures to ensure minimal disruption and safety of the neighborhood during construction. Again, we included in the bid and contract documents special project conditions that hold the contractor to a very high standard of care and behavior. We included a substantial performance bonus as an incentive to maintain this standard of care throughout the project. We have vetted this contractor's qualifications, its safety program, and references very thoroughly. We held this pre-award meeting that I just described, and we also will have full oversight by the city during the construction of this project as we had on the previous project, including two full-time onsite inspectors and construction engineers, as well as project management. The public contract code requires agencies to award contracts to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Staff feels comfortable that in light of the foregoing, JMB's bid satisfies these requirements and recommends that the city council authorize the award of this contract tonight to JMB Construction. In terms of the proposed schedule, if the council awards the contract tonight, we will hold a pre-construction meeting with JMB, most likely the week after next, issue a notice to proceed to them mid-June, with construction starting shortly thereafter. The contract is 200 working days, which equates to about 10 months, a little less than 10 months, so that would put the completion out about March 1st of 2014. The next phase of the project, Phase Four, will be all of the surface improvements in the neighborhood. And when I say surface improvements, I'm talking about repaving the streets, reconstructing the curb gutter and sidewalks, putting in the streetlight system. That project's currently in design. The plan is to dovetail that construction start immediately upon the completion of this phase of work. With that, I conclude my presentation, and welcome any questions.
Good. Any questions for Harry?
To the chair. I thank you for the report. I know extra concern and care was taken in regards to this. You just want to summarize, on the 2008 incident, you did say that they went through the proper process, put in a USA ticket, marked it either via white paint or flags, and it was unfortunate that the line wasn't acknowledged because it was to a vacant property. So the contractor followed all protocol.
Correct.
What I need to understand more is this performance bonus. So I understand there's a lot of extra items that have been placed upon that is probably unprecedented, uncharacteristic, but obviously this is a unique situation for us, and it takes three violations in order for the $60,000 not to be awarded at the conclusion. And I'm trying to understand, A, why three violations, two, why are we giving a $60,000 bonus and why isn't there a deduction if there's a violation? So I'm trying to understand better as to a bonus for doing a job that you were hired to do, to do it right and to do it well.
So I think in terms of, you know, why there's a bonus, again, what we wanted to do was give an incentive to this contractor to perform above and beyond what a contractor is required to do. Unfortunately, as a public contract, there is not a great deal of leverage that we have over a contractor in terms of some of the issues that we specified as far as these special provisions are concerned. We can, for example, if some of their personnel are speeding or using foul language or other things, we can issue them a warning and ultimately ask that they be removed from the project. That's not to say that the next person might not be doing the same thing, and so we're in more of an enforcement mode as opposed to an incentive mode. We think that, given the size of this bonus, which represents a little less than 1 percent of the contract amount and the items that are described, that it is a good incentive for the contractor to, for lack of a better way of describing it, be good boys up in the neighborhood.
Be good people.
If I might add, the idea of a contract bonus or incentive is not a unique invention. It's not something that the City of San Bruno has done on a regular basis. I'm not even sure that whether or not we've done this in the past. It is a structure that is typically used by municipalities for time on the contract. In other words, if it's desirable in order to get the job, if it's desirable to get the job done as soon as possible, and that can be incentivized financially, it is a very typical way that municipalities get that, in that case, above and beyond time consideration. This is not a typical construction project, and this is not a typical construction site or even a typical neighborhood. It is one where the highest level of special consideration and sensitivity needs to be demonstrated to the residents and to the neighborhood and to the community as a whole. While the contract will, we believe, produce tangible benefits to the neighborhood in the long run, we cannot, and the contractor cannot, under any circumstances, view this as a routine construction assignment that, because it will produce good in the end, can be done in the normal construction manner. So after considerable deliberation, staff viewed this construction bonus as a desirable way to provide some additional tools that, as Mr. Burrows has indicated, really are not readily available to the public entity in managing and enforcing above and beyond considerations in the delivery of the construction project.
On that note, if I could, this was part of the bid package, these clauses?
Correct.
So there's, we can't change anything now, right? The question was asked, you know, why is there not penalties? My experience, my experience in construction contracts was mainly incentives and penalties on schedule. Give an incentive if you finish earlier or on time, and you pay a penalty if, you know, if it gets extended or you're late. So are there any penalties on this?
Well, there's the standard liquidated damages clauses
Okay.
For time delays, which is what you're describing there. In terms of the performance bonus, it is built into the bid, so right now, this bid amount that you see in front of you includes the $60,000 performance bonus. If the contractor does not comply, then that, those monies will get subtracted from his bid amount.
Yeah, that's okay. Anyone else? Michael?
To the chair, thank you. I had a question about how the non-compliance is determined. Who makes that determination that non-compliance has occurred? And does a contractor then have an appeal process to a decision that's made by either the department or, how's that going to work?
Yes, so the, in any notice of violation, the contractor will first be issued a verbal warning, and then he'll be issued a written warning. We wanted to have a little bit of leeway with the contractor in determining, you know, what constitutes a violation or not in terms of setting the tone at the beginning of the project. Our inspectors and our resident engineer will be making that determination as to what entails a violation, but the contractor will be given up to three written violations. At the third written violation, he will be issued a notice that says that he is no longer eligible for the performance bonus. And I'm sorry, the rest of your question was?
That was, would they have an appeal was the last part of it?
Yes, there is a process that, once they receive a written notice of violation, they can protest that. Mark, correct me or can you interject here in terms of what that process is?
I'm sorry, unfortunately, I, we don't have it, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you off the top of my head. What I can say is that the performance bonus is an additional tool that was incorporated into the contract based primarily on past experience, in which we found that the tools in standard municipal contracts that were led by, led to the lowest bidder were really not sufficient to address some of the issues that had occurred previously. And so we're not using the performance bonus to replace the contractor's obligation to do all the things that the contractor has to do in order to meet the terms of the contract. It's just an additional tool. What we discovered in prior contracts is that if there are violations, and even penalties or liquidated damages, that oftentimes that doesn't allow the city to do anything other than say, now we're going to assess a penalty, now you're going to get liquidated damages. The other tools that the city was being requested to use in prior instances, such as, can't we eliminate this, can't we tell the contractor we're going to find somebody else? All of those things, because we don't like what the contractor's doing, were not tools that are available to the city. So instead, staff, after extensive discussions, ended up with the additional tools of a performance bonus, so that that way there would be an additional incentive for the contractor to perform not just on day one or two, but also on up to, up to the last day of the contract.
Okay. And Harry, can you go over again how the loading of that bonus is structured? They're going to, they get, they're entitled to 40 percent at what point?
Yeah, the total bonus, again, is $60,000. $40,000 will be held to the final notice of completion, so essentially the project has to be complete before they'll get that 40,000, that last 40,000. The initial 40,000, $20,000 will get paid out on a pro-rata basis, based upon the length of the contract remaining, but it won't start until the third progress payment. So it'll, it'll be three months into the project before they receive that first payment, which will be a portion, a pro-rated portion of $20,000, spread out over the remaining portion of the contract.
Okay. I think it's an interesting, an interesting tool, an interesting incentive. The $60,000 amount, it does seem very small compared to the size of the contract, and I'm wondering why we felt that was an adequate amount of an incentive.
Yeah. Well, what we, the thought process was about 1 percent plus or minus of the total contract amount. Typically, you know, a contract of this size, contractor's looking at somewhere between, depending on the contractor, 5 percent to up to 10 percent profit. This represents 1 percent of the contract amount, which is a significant portion of, you know, potential profit for a contractor. So we think it's enough to get contractors' attention. As an aside, based upon our discussions with JMB in our pre-award meeting, our feeling is that they recognize the dollar value. It is an incentive for them, and we think they are committed to performing adequately and above the thresholds that we have set in the neighborhood so that they can get that performance bonus.
Okay, great. And so then, once the project is underway, if a resident had a complaint about the contractor, they would address that with you, I assume?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One follow-up to Councilmember Salazar. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. You said if they receive three written violations, then they forego the 60. However, what you, if I heard you correctly, you said they get a warning, and then if it happens again, they get a written. So am I, am I safe to say that in order to get two written's, you've already had two verbals and two written's?
Yeah, it's a little bit complicated, the way we set it up, to explain, but actually, we wanted to, you know, have a little bit of leeway in making at least the initial determination. So what we've done is we've said that the contractor will have two verbal warnings, okay, in total. So we've got 40 special conditions. Two, after two verbal warnings, he gets a written warning, whether it's on any of those specific conditions. For example, if he gets, if he has a dusty construction site, we'll issue a warning. He can get a second verbal warning based upon foul language, okay? That, that next warning he gets will be a written violation, okay? He gets two total verbals, and then he gets his first written. If he gets three written's in aggregate, or three written's on any particular item, that will void his performance bonus.
Okay, so it's two verbals to get the written?
Correct.
Each time?
No.
No. So after the, two total?
Just in total.
For the whole cycle of the job?
Yeah.
Okay. And then so, and maybe it was already answered and I just, I missed it, when you said there was the appeal, Councilmember Salazar asked, whom did, whom would the contractor appeal to if they felt this was not an appropriate warning?
He will appeal directly to the city.
The city is, which department? Who?
The city will be the Public Services Department.
Okay, so it goes to the Director of Public Works, who hears it out in a hearing forum? Or how is?
Yeah, again, I think we need to check our specifications on that to answer that question correctly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more question. To the chair?
Oh, Michael.
Sort of a, this is a complete aside, I had a resident in that area ask about the undergrounding of the electrical system, and I know that's something we said would probably be cost prohibitive and we're probably not going to address that. I'm wondering if during this phase, if there were some opportunity, if we had any interest at all in revisiting that, would now be a good time to consider putting in some conduit or some infrastructure to support that? And do we forego that opportunity after this is done? Or is that, has that ship already sailed?
Yeah. No, that's a very good question, and obviously it comes up quite a bit from the residents up there still. Going back to staff's recommendation of probably about a year ago, the recommendation was to not underground the utilities up there because of the additional disruption that it would cause to all of the individual homes by having to trench in the side yards for the new services. In terms of, could it be done now, and it's now a good time versus any other, it doesn't really matter. It's, it's, you know, staff's opinion that it's going to be disruptive no matter when it's done. We certainly, I don't think, would want to undertake it any later than this project if we were going to, but regardless, it is, the disruption that we're going to have in the neighborhood for this work, we can multiply that times, you know, at least two times on an individual homeowner basis of what the undergrounding disruption would be.
Anything else? Would someone like to introduce their resolution for adoption?
To the chair? I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Item 10D, receive a report and provide direction to staff regarding development of plans for celebration of the city's first 100 years of incorporation in December 2014 centennial.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about something exciting. This city has the once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity to celebrate who it is, how we got here, and where we're going, in the form of the city's first 100 years of incorporation celebration and its centennial. The centennial occurs on, formally, on December 23rd, 2014, just over a year and a half from now. Actually, in terms of a planning horizon, not a tremendously long time to recognize and and prepare for celebration of the features that I just mentioned. Staff is in front of you tonight to suggest your consideration and any input that you would like to provide at this point in the planning process related to the types of activities, the frequency of activities, and perhaps most importantly, the establishment of a centennial planning committee. Staff is recommending tonight that you specifically consider the establishment of a City Council Subcommittee that would provide leadership to an expanded base of community residents and other participat, other participants, both residents, businesses and other community stakeholders who may have either a knowledge base and information to share and/or simply a desire to assist and support this exciting occasion. Beyond the establishment of the City Council Subcommittee and the, any ideas you may have about the broadening of that participation through residents, businesses and others, staff is seeking any immediate or preliminary guidance the City Council may be interested in providing, having to do with the type of centennial celebration that you might be interested in, whether it's one or a small number of significant events or potentially a year-long celebration beginning as early as January of 2014 with monthly activities. There are lots of good examples with other cities and more locally with our own San Bruno Park School District that celebrated its centennial a couple of years ago. And we already have a number of community events where partnership with other organizations who are active in delivering those events, for example, the Posey Parade, the Parks and Recreation Activities in the park during the summertime, our December Tree Lighting Ceremony, all provide good venues and opportunities both to partner with other community organizations already doing activities in our community, but also to use those events and venues as a springboard for a more significant celebration that would recognize, again, 100 years of the city's past and an indefinite term for its future opportunities for growth and development. So with that, I'd be interested in hearing any discussion and guidance from the City Council. Thank you.
Okay. Ken?
I think Burlingame, I mean, my, my first, you know, remembrance is that Burlingame made it very aware to the peninsula that they were celebrating 100 years. I don't know all the different events that they did, but I know it was throughout the year. I think that's probably the level that I'd like to see, but at least to really inform San Brunans that it is 100 years. And one thing that I just whispered to Councilman Medina was that we should probably invest in, you know, some banners, maybe street banners or something that advertises 100 years. And that would get, that would get the awareness starting.
Anyone else? I'd like to suggest that regarding the Subcommittee, myself and Mr. Medina would work on that committee.
Great.
And we're going to delegate an awful lot of stuff, believe me. But I personally would like to see a number of events next year culminating in something in December, whatever that happens to be. And I think we really have to do some outreach, whether it be through the Times, the Daily Journal, the press, to solicit as much information as we can from a lot of the historians in this city and around the city that have an awful lot of, an awful lot of information and history and, and just all the stuff we're going to need to put this on, so.
And I don't know how the history, but obviously, 70, 75 years I was on staff, but I do remember when we had that celebration. And so if there's any type of record or documents of maybe what we did, how we did it, you know, I know there was a lot of merchandise that was purchased at the time. I don't know that all of it was, you know, yeah. But needless to say, there may be something of what we did in the 75th that might help guide us as well.
All right. Harry?
I agree with you. I think a year-long celebration accumulating with something, I don't know if we want to do something every month. I think that's a little exhausting, but I think the list of things that we already do is a good start and we can incorporate the 100-year anniversary with that. One thing I noticed we didn't list and maybe, maybe something that we could beef up is our Arbor Day, our Arbor Day celebration. I know we move it around and it's really not too well-established, but it might be something to think about, like with the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts planting 100 trees someplace or, you know, some kind of thing like that. So, I'd like to see if we could add that. I brought San, the city of San Ramon, they only celebrated their 30th year, but they did a whole newspaper article, a newspaper really, with that, about that, which I will give to the mayor. And I also had something from, I think, I forget which celebration it was, I think it was the 25th year celebration that my family had that was a lucky penny that I, that I would like to find again. I can't remember where I put it. And share with everyone. But I believe Randy had taken a picture of it, so it's, we have some things. Anyway, and my mother has a lot of stuff.
Yeah, there are a lot of people in the city that do have an awful lot of stuff and history, so it'll be challenging and I think a lot of fun. And I think just the mention of this on cable a number of times and who would be interested in helping out are going to bring a lot of people. And also to the City Clerk Carol, maybe you can look in the archives and see what we might be able to dig up if we had a 50th or, I know we had a 75th, so that kind of stuff, we can, we can work on that. So, you need anything else this evening? Or that kind of gets us rolling?
That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with telecommunications engineering associates in the amount of $65,000 for the installation of 911 replacement equipment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Neil Telford, your Police Chief, and with me tonight is Debbie Shembry. She is our records and communications supervisor. Before you tonight is our request to replace our 911 controller and expend approximately $65,000 to install the equipment to be redundant with another 911 service provider. The Police Department's Communication Center receives all 911 calls made in San Bruno and that includes landline and cellular phones. On average, we receive about 1,100 911 calls a month. That includes actual 911 calls and 911 hangup or missedials. Communication centers or public safety answering points, and they're also referred to as PSAPs, are eligible to receive funding to replace or upgrade equipment every five years from the state of California 911 Emergency Communication Office. Our current 911 controller was put in service in 2005 and we believe that it's time for this equipment replacement. When the equipment was installed, the state covered maintenance for this equipment for five years. That five years has expired. Now, that amount gets deducted from the amount we're eligible to receive from the state. Staff at the Police Department researched the vendors listed in the state's master purchase agreement and we selected Entrado as a preferred vendor for the 911 controller. The Entrado product was within the state's allotment that they give to San Bruno. The Entrado product was also capable of accepting next-generation technology. So that includes text messages and photos being received on the 911 system. It's actually pretty exciting. It should be noted that the state hasn't figured out what exactly those specifications are going to be for next-generation compliance, nor have the cell phone providers figured out how they're going to get this material to the 911 centers. We're hoping that is figured out soon, but it's important to note that Entrado has advised us that they're capable now of receiving that, receiving that information and they believe that just with the software upgrade, they'll be able to address any issue that is changed from the state or the cell phone providers. While researching, well, the Entrado product also has another wonderful feature and it allows that communication center or public safety answering point to connect with another public safety answering point that also uses the Entrado product. The agency is then capable of answering 911 calls and if they're connected with radio equipment, they can dispatch a call. So for example, if we pair up with another Entrado provider and our radio communication is configured correctly, we could dispatch for that agency and vice versa. This is extremely important when 911 centers are overloaded and as I'm sure all of you remember, in 2010, when the pipeline exploded, we had one dispatcher on duty and we had one records clerk on duty to handle that extremely high volume of calls. Fortunately, we were able to ring all of those, or a lot of those 911's over to county. While researching this equipment, we had discussions with members from Burlingame Police Department. And also, Entrado has generated a lot of interest from other 911 centers and especially in San Mateo County. There are several agencies in San Mateo County that are currently looking at Entrado because of that redundant capability. But we had discussions with Burlingame because Burlingame is configured similar to San Bruno. There are times where they staff their dispatchers in a 24-hour period with one dispatcher, same as San Bruno. They also use the same computer automated dispatch or CAD and RMS or Records Management System as San Bruno does. Connecting these two agencies with the Entrado product combined with the same CAD and RMS system provides immediate backup in an emergency. So if there's a dispatcher that is sick, we can flip the switch and go to Burlingame. Burlingame's able to dispatch the officer, take the call from San Bruno and send it right to the officers in San Bruno, including to the cars. So, it's hard to keep all these acronyms together and I have a hard time keeping track of them myself. So it's, it's easier or helpful to think of Entrado as the 911 telephone system and 911, and Entrado also will handle the business lines. And the CAD or Computer Automated Dispatch and Records Management System, RMS, as the record-keeping component of police and it stores all the archives for all the calls we go on. So it keeps track of time, who called us, all police reports are stored in there, all of the information distributed to the officers in the car goes through the computer automated These two systems complement one another, but they are separate. With the exception of a few cities that include San Bruno and Burlingame, most San Mateo County law enforcement agencies use the same CAD and RMS system. We're not one of them. We're one of six agencies that use a different system and of those six agencies, we share the same computer automated dispatch and records management system with five other agencies, including Burlingame. It is important to note that these agencies, the six agencies, are considering going to a different vendor for their CAD and RMS. We are as well. It's going to be a costly effort, but we will be bringing that to you with the capital improvement budget in the coming months. Both San Bruno and Burlingame contract with telecommunications engineering associates, or TEA, to provide maintenance and service of our 911 communication center. TEA was contacted regarding the connectivity of Entrado system and connecting San Bruno and Burlingame. So that includes being able from San Bruno to control the intercom systems at Burlingame, the door locks at Burlingame, the camera system at Burlingame, electronic gates and vice versa. They would be able to control ours as well. So everything could be done remotely. This is something new and it would be the first time that something like this occurred in San Mateo County. And it would also involve connecting phone lines to San Bruno, likewise in Burlingame, and connecting the agencies with a T1 communication line. This compatibility, as I said, will allow dispatch to handle each other's calls for service in event of an emergency or of an overload in 911 calls. And it also supports some of the conclusions and recommendations made in the recent grand jury report on police dispatch. And those recommendations included to develop arrangements with other agencies for dispatch consolidation, to consolidate or increase dispatch staff in centers so that no center has less than two dispatchers during off-peak hours, and to develop backups and redundant systems for dispatch centers. San Bruno's portion to connect San Bruno and Burlingame's dispatch center is estimated at about $65,000. And that includes equipment installation and consulting costs associated with the connecting the two agencies. Now, we, we had a discussion with TEA and we said, really, this much money? And he said, well, they, they, because this is a new venture, they estimate it high, but we're not sure that it's going to be that amount. The cost for the Entrado 911 project is $196,800 and includes staff training and annual maintenance for five years. This amount is covered by funding from California's 911 Communication Office and it should be noted that we've been in contact with the state over the past year regarding our equipment replacement. Last week, we were notified that we had to have our current vendor provide us with a letter that our equipment has reached the end of its serviceable life. This is a new requirement. And all of the time where 911 funding has come across, the agency's never been required to submit a letter by the current vendor saying that its equipment has reached the end of its life. Today, we received notice that the manufacturer of our current equipment has notified the state that their, that their system is still usable, however, they acknowledge that it's outdated and it's not the newest technology. We're in dispute of this fact as our vendor is a competitor of Entrado and our current vendor did give us a bid when we were researching the vendors for 911 systems. It should also be noted that we had two 911 stations within the last month be in need of repair. They fixed one of those stations, they gave it back to us, it didn't work because they had installed new software. They had to downgrade that software to get that repair to actually work again. We're working with the state to obtain approval for the equipment replacement and tonight, we're asking your approval of the $65,000 expenditure to connect with Burlingame. Of course, that connection and that expenditure would be contingent upon approval from the state and if, if the state does not give us approval or if there are any issues, of course, we're not going to move forward. That concludes my presentation and Debbie and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of the Chief or Debbie?
To the Chair? Chief, you mentioned that the systems require a dedicated T1 connection between both departments, ours and Burlingame's?
Yes.
What's the, the annual cost of a dedicated T1 line these days? Okay. And I guess it's not critical to this discussion. I was curious though, because that, that is going to become part of our operational cost going forward and that wasn't really addressed in the report. So when I heard that, I just, the light bulb went off. But if you don't have it in front of you, that's fine, we can.
It's originally estimated at $9,600 per year billed monthly.
$9,600, about $10,000 a year. Okay, thank you.
Here you go.
Didn't have any questions. The only thing I wanted to say to Debbie and to the 911 dispatchers and those folks that work in the office, thank you for the job you do.
Thank you. Appreciate you, your recognition, Council.
Anything else? Any action?
Go ahead and, go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Great. Item 10, we're going to skip to item 10G, adopt a resolution confirming special assessments for unpaid municipal code violations, abatement costs at 502 San Felipe Avenue and 175 Martin Place and authorizing the County of San Mateo to place the special assessments on the 2013-14 property tax rolls. property tax rolls.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The city's code enforcement officers handle a broad range of complaints ranging from construction without permits to nuisance violations. These nuisance violations have to do with junk and debris in public spaces, inoperable vehicles, and overgrown vegetation. Typically, a complaint comes in and the code enforcement officers will initially go out, investigate to make sure that indeed the complaint is valid, and then there'll be a notice of violation placed on the property to seek voluntary compliance. And in the event that voluntary compliance is not achieved, then the code enforcement officer will issue a citation. The citation carries with it fines and penalties. In a very small number of cases, these attempts, these tools to seek correction of a code violation are unsuccessful and it becomes necessary for the staff to actually seek lawful entry onto a property to abate or correct a violation. In a case like that, the city does incur costs for the abatement and for the staff time for the code enforcement officers. And it becomes necessary for the city to try to recover those costs. And we have a process, a special assessment process whereby the city council adopts a resolution. The resolution is forwarded to the County of San Mateo and the County of San Mateo places the special assessment on the next-year tax rolls, collects the funds, and then the costs are remitted to the City of San Bruno. And in this way, we recoup our costs. This past year, we have two properties that fall into this circumstance. One property is at 502 San Felipe Avenue and the other property is at 175 Martin Place. In both cases, these properties were vacated, they needed to be secured, there was overgrown vegetation, there was junk and debris in public view. The code enforcement staff went forward, hired crews to go in and correct these violations, and costs were incurred by the city. In the case of 502 San Felipe, the costs were in total $4,825. And in the case of 175 Martin Place, the costs were $4,000. Tonight, we've prepared a resolution for your action whereby, upon adoption, this resolution would be forwarded to the County of San Mateo to place these costs on next year's tax roll for collection and rebittance to the City of San Bruno. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Irene?
Thank you. First of all, when you say we notify the property owner, do we do it, how do we do that? By certified letter or just a regular letter or how?
We do that by both regular mail and certified mail. In both cases, as you noticed in the staff report perhaps, there have been a number of notices of violation and citations issued to these properties. And in those cases, those were sent out by certified mail. More recently, we did send final notifications to both property owners by regular mail that this item would be brought to the city council for consideration. But in both cases, these items have been ongoing for months and even years. And during that period of time, both regular mail and certified mail has been sent out.
Okay, thank you. And then, why so long? I mean, the San Felipe, is it San Felipe? No, the Martin Place, 2004? I mean, is there a reason that it took nine years to get it done? Or is it other things got done and this is the last piece of it?
In some cases, a little bit of work is done and it seems like things will be addressed. And then there's a lapse and then the property owner doesn't maintain the property and there's a lapse. And it falls into disrepair again. There's an accumulation of debris, the vegetation becomes overgrown. So in that case, it's just taken this length of time. In the other case, this is actually reoccurring. In the other case at 502 San Felipe, we went through a similar process last year and yet, you know, again, this has reoccurred. So it's a second round on 502 San Felipe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's been no contact with these property owners?
There's been contact simply by mail, but no direct contact that I'm aware of.
So there's been a response? There's been...
There's been no response.
Okay, so we don't know if they're even accepting?
We don't know. I don't know personally at this point.
Do we know how, do we know how the county is collecting?
Yes, the county will receive the resolution from the city.
No, I mean, they're ongoing property taxes, they're annual property taxes.
That's correct.
Does the county allow, does the county inform you that yes, the property taxes have been paid annually?
What we understand, and we checked into this today, is that upon receiving the resolution, the county will remit those costs to the city. And the county will have the obligation, the responsibility to then go after and collect the taxes and any penalties for non-payment.
Okay, I guess my question is, ongoing property taxes of these properties, have they been collected by the county?
I'm not aware of that.
So we don't know if anybody is paying anything?
I'm not aware of the circumstance in terms of the county collecting the taxes from these property owners. Our understanding though is that going through this process and the agreement we entered into with the county, they would pay these fees, these costs. And then they in turn would go after the property owners to obtain the charges.
Okay. So it's safe to say that without any, these properties have more than likely been abandoned?
At the very least, vacated at this point in time.
Interesting.
Any questions? Action.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye. Now we'll go to 10F, authorize the city manager to execute contracts with Godby Research in the amount up to $40,000 and McGovern Consulting in the amount up to $75,000 to conduct a voter opinion survey and public education related to a potential voter initiative to amend ordinance 1284 within the City of San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan area and adopt budget amendment appropriating $115,000 to the general fund planning budget.
To the chair.
Michael.
I have some very strong opinions on this, but the law requires me to recuse myself from this topic because my primary residence is within 500 feet of the project area.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, I'll just echo what Councilmember Salazar said. I'm also within the 500 feet and I've been told by our city attorney that I need to recuse myself on this matter.
All right. Mark, just for clarification, if one of the council members has a strong opinion, they can address the council at the podium as a citizen?
Absolutely. The law allows the recused council members to return to the room during the public comment portion before the city council makes a decision and to make whatever public statements they wish as a member of the public and then leave the room until after the conclusion of the item.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, the purpose of this agenda item is to seek city council authorization, as allowed by state law, to fund voter opinion research and public education in advance of considering whether to place a proposed voter initiative on the upcoming November 5th, 2013 ballot to amend San Bruno ordinance 1284. And it's important to note that the city council needs to make a decision regarding placing this measure on that ballot by August 9th of this year. Use of professional public opinion specialists to assist with determining whether and when to place initiative of this nature on a ballot is very standard and in fact was done in 2001 when a similar ballot initiative for measure E for the crossing mixed-use development was successfully placed on a ballot. The crossing is now a 20-acre mixed-use development that is now mostly built out. Ordinance number 1284 was adopted by the city council in 1977. It prohibits buildings higher than three stories or 50 feet in height, construction of multi-story parking structures, increasing densities within districts that were zoned residential in 1974, or development within designated scenic corners unless approved by a majority of the voters of the City of San Bruno. Earlier this year on February 12th, after several years of effort and thorough review, the San Bruno City Council adopted the Transit Corridors Plan with a principal goal of promoting much-needed economic development and investment and revitalization within San Bruno's downtown and commercial areas associated with portions of San Mateo Avenue, Huntington Avenue, El Camino Real, and San Bruno Avenue. The Transit Corridors Plan establishes development standards and design guidelines to support both public and private improvements in this area and to facilitate the economic development, investment, and revitalization of this area. The vision for the Transit Corridors Plan area is modern, compact development form, not unlike the crossing development, with new height limits, adequate parking, mixed land uses linked for pedestrians and bicyclists to BART and the new Caltrain stations and to the downtown with a broad range of housing, retail, and professional office opportunities. To fully implement this vision, the Transit Corridors Plan Development Standards and Design Guidelines call for new building heights ranging from four to seven stories in specified locations, increasing residential densities on approximately 44 parcels within this plan area, and for above-ground parking garages. Again, these standards and guidelines are proposed only within the specified areas of the city's commercial and downtown corridors within the Transit Corridors Plan area. It was acknowledged by the city council with the approval of the Transit Corridors Plan that a ballot measure would need to be approved by the voters of San Bruno and that the city's zoning code would need to be updated to incorporate the development standards and design guidelines of the Transit Corridors Plan to fully implement the vision of that plan. And at the time of the adoption of the Transit Corridors Plan, the city council directed staff to explore placing a ballot measure on the upcoming municipal election to allow the voters of the City of San Bruno to consider amending ordinance 1284 to enable the full implementation of the corridors plan and its primary goals and vision. Consequently, staff has prepared a request for proposals, an RFP, and it's been distributed to qualified public opinion and polling consultants to assist the city with public education and to determine whether and when to place an initiative on a ballot. The team of Godby Research and McGovern Consulting and the team of the Next Generation and EMC Research Services responded to the staff's RFP. The Godby McGovern team proposed a more comprehensive approach to determining voter sentiment on this important matter, using more telephone surveys as well as focus groups to obtain this information during the informational non-advocacy stage of determining whether and when to place an initiative on the ballot. In addition, Godby McGovern was the team that provided public opinion and polling assistance during the successful 2001 crossing, measure E ballot measure. Accordingly, the staff is recommending this evening to the city council to go forward and authorize the city manager to execute contracts with Godby Research in the amount of up to $40,000 and McGovern Consulting in the amount of $75,000 to conduct a voter opinion survey and public educational outreach related to a potential voter initiative to amend ordinance 1284 within the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan area and adopt a budget amendment appropriating $115,000 for this effort to the general fund planning budget. Staff anticipates these funds will come from sales tax, which is about $150,000 above the current year budget amount of $6.85 million. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Irene?
Thank you. I realize that Godby and McGovern were very successful in 2001 along with all the efforts of the residents of San Bruno who supported the amendment or the specific plan for the Navy site. However, we were not so successful in 2006 with the same team. And in my opinion, part of, a part of why we weren't so successful, or maybe we were overconfident because of some of the results that Godby got. I think, I think we need to, or they need to outreach more extensively than they did in 2006. Here it says up to 400 total voters. I think it should be at least 400 total voters. I don't know if you can change the contract at this point, but up to is, it needs to be at least. And also the focus groups, we did focus groups in 2006. They were very concerned and interested residents who happened to be very supportive also of what we were trying to do at the time. So unfortunately, the information I think got skewed one, you know, in more positive ways than was realistic. So I think we need to look at how those, or they need to look at how those focus groups are conducted or if we should have those kinds of focus groups. In general, I support the concepts and what we need to be doing.
Ken, anything?
Yeah. I echo what the vice mayor says. We were here and cannot, the success of the crossing cannot be compared with this in my estimation. Yes, it's a similar, it's the same ordinance, but there's different players. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, we know who the, you know, we know who the opposition is. We sat here during those hearings and we have some very concerned citizens. You can, you know, and I'm very much in favor of the Transit Corridors Plan. And everything you say and everything that was explained as far as how it's going to transform the city and benefit the city is fine. But we have opposition because we have residents who are envisioning seven stories in their backyard. So I think we need to really concentrate on that. Because before you know it, if we're not addressing them, they will get their supporters and we're not, we're not positioned for a fight. We can't campaign, you know, alongside being, you know, possibly also campaigning, you know, for, you know, for a seat up here. So we don't have a lot of options other than to be very honest, be very upfront with the public and let them know that what we're doing is, is something that they can trust. With that said, I mean, I don't really think, I mean, we've gotten this far with the Transit Corridors Plan, we have to put it up for a vote. Whether or not Godby and McGovern say it's, you know, it's a slim chance. I, first time I heard that Godby was involved, you know, half-cent sales tax and they told us 77%, you know, of the community would vote for it, you know, and we lost under 50%, you know? So I don't know what that means. I don't know if it's their fault that they, you know, surveyed the wrong people or didn't get the right type of survey. But I think we really need, we can't... But I think we really need, we can't take these things for granted. We need to really go towards, you know, go for the people that we know, the residents that we know who are, you know, who would more than likely vote no on it.
I also agree with what Irene said regarding the at least 400 has to be, you know, at least 400 or more. And the focus groups have to be very, very focused this time because we have to sit these people down and let them know exactly what we're thinking about, what we're planning, and the potential of what would happen in their neighborhoods, and that we're, we don't have the intention of putting seven stories right behind their homes. That's not what we're after. So, it has to be explained very, very slowly and very concisely. So, I agree with the recommendation, but Godby and McGovern both have to understand where we're coming from because this is a very serious situation, in fact, for the future of San Bruno. We have a lot of plans that'll make this a much better city than it already is. But the people have to understand, it's the people that are living there that live with us day-to-day, and they have to understand through these groups and focus groups and outreach that, you know, we're serious about preserving their lifestyle also. So, it doesn't say it right here, but this is, we are asking for a resolution. Would someone like to introduce that?
Mr. Mayor, may I comment? First of all, the agenda does not properly identify that there is a resolution to document your action, although the action as identified on the agenda is complete with respect to the staff's recommendation. I just wanted to comment, though, quickly on the concerns that the city council has, in my opinion, rightfully identified. The staff did take the opportunity of a very, shall we say, focused conversation with the Godby and McGovern team to eliminate and to dive into these, the precise issues that the city council has articulated. While there are no guarantees in either the work that will be performed or its result, I can assure you that the team has had the opportunity to clearly understand the appropriate reservations of the city council in this regard, and they have responded, in my view, with a thoughtful approach to, particularly to the polling, as well as to the pre-election educational outreach. In particular, what ultimately impressed staff with team's approach was both the relatively more number of voters to be surveyed, and we will certainly make sure that the number, as Vice Mayor O'Connell has identified, is at least 400 and not, not less than 400. But also with this concept of focus groups, we did carefully discuss the issue of a scientific selection of individuals to participate in the focus groups as opposed to identification of persons who may have been involved or may be knowledgeable about this topic, which probably really want is people who don't already know very much about it. And to be able, therefore, to test both what type of educational outreach might be useful to the formulation of a thoughtful opinion by members of the public. But secondly, the team did clearly identify to us that their approach will be to fully analyze and vet a number of different alternatives, both about the timing as well as the content of a ballot measure. So, there is no foregone conclusion. While ultimately for the Transit Corridor Plan to be implemented successfully, a ballot measure is necessary, and it is necessary that it be successful. The polling and the pre-election educational outreach doesn't presume anything about when a ballot measure might be brought forward or exactly how that will be articulated. That is the purpose of the polling, and we consider it highly essential to be able to correctly and thoroughly inform and advise the city council about this very important decision. So, while they will be looking at the possibility of a November ballot measure, they will also be looking at the potential for the need for additional education or different types of education that the city may be recommended to undertake prior to a ballot measure being presented to the voters. So, I hope that that information is at least useful to addressing, if not alleviating, the concerns. The city council will also have full opportunity to address these issues straight on with the consultants as we move forward through this process, should you determine tonight to move forward.
Yeah. If I could, I was going to ask if there was going to be any advice and strategy and, you know, and ballot, even ballot language and stuff.
That is, that is the portion that is the essential part of the McGovern Consulting part of this team. Godby Associates will provide the data. McGovern, in conjunction with Godby as well as with yourselves, will devise a strategy for education of the public and for the timing of the election.
Yeah, okay. We have members of the public who'd like to speak on this?
All right. State your name and street. My name is Michael Salazar. I live on Reed Avenue, and I have a brief comment for the council tonight. I know that this is an important effort, part of a grander scheme, and the only issue I wanted to raise is that I do have a fundamental problem with using the taxpayers' dollars to pursue an effort that might appear to be almost manipulation of a vote because it would tend to try to influence an agenda. And I know ultimately, it probably would benefit the city to move in that direction, but using a significant amount of public funds for that means, to me, it just doesn't seem the best use of those funds. And I also wonder if, regardless of what consultant's opinion might be at the end of the day, if that would really have a material effect on what the council is going to do because I think that the direction has already been set, and certain things have to happen. And whether or not that opinion comes back favorable or non-favorable, would that really change your opinions or the direction that the city's already heading in? And for that, for that consideration, I would, I would ask you to reconsider spending that amount of money if it's really not going to affect ultimately what you end up doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, I just wanted to address briefly Mr. Salazar's comment about the use of public funds because that... Can you hear your answer? I don't know.
You have to see him out, too.
Oh, yes, absolutely, of course. This is an issue that the California state courts feel is very important, and fortunately, they have decided a number of significant cases that inform how public funds are spent in the education and information leading up to a ballot measure. And the law in California is that while public funds cannot be used to campaign in favor of or in opposition to a measure, public funds can be used and have been routinely used by public entities to inform and educate the public regarding the nature and the effect of those ballot measures. And there are a number of cases that we're thoroughly familiar with, as I'm informed, are the consultants', and we intend to scrupulously follow California case law with respect to making sure that all of the city's efforts using public funds are done solely for the purposes of informing and educating the public.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, regarding the resolution, I know there's a resolution in the packet, but not on the agenda. Can we just make a motion, Mark?
No, we understand that the actual language adopting a resolution isn't in the title, but it is in the staff report, and the title does give fair notice that an action would be taken to authorize the city manager to do that, and the usual way of doing that is via resolution. So, I think you can go ahead.
Okay. Someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 11, reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't none this evening. Item 12, comments from council members? All right, nothing this evening. And closed session? We don't have a closed session this evening. This meeting will adjourn until the next city council meeting, right here, June 11, 2013.